Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting for August 22. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight, and those of you that are watching at home, we're glad to have you as well. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have two students, Zion Bell, a first grader at Hobgood, and also Hannah Nelson, a sixth grade student at Black Fox, to lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Ladies, Zion and Hannah, before you sit down, will you go back to the microphone just a minute? I've got a question. I know of no better way to find out how the eclipse went yesterday at your school than to ask you. Zion, how was it at Hobgood?
It was good.
Did you get to go outside and you got to see all the eclipse and everything involved?
Yes.
All right, very good. Hannah, what about y'all at, so you're at Black Fox, aren't you?
Amazing.
Amazing. Yes, it was. All right, well, thank you ladies very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight to lead us in the pledge and to give us a report on the eclipse yesterday. All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. You've got that in front of you.
I'll so move.
To approve. Thank you, Mr. King. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Communications?
Yes, Lisa.
Good evening, Board. We are excited to announce a new partnership. It's Touchpoint. Touchpoint is the food nutrition services provider at St. Thomas Rutherford. They are becoming our sponsor of our chef's academy, so we are thrilled to have them on board. They're going to bring a whole new set of knowledge with their chefs and all of everything that they're providing, so we are excited to announce that. We will still have our, the sponsors that we had last year, which is the Rutherford County Health Department and Farm Credit Mid-America. Also, Murfreesboro City Schools would like to extend their appreciation to Atha Dappa Kappa Teacher Sorority for the donation of duffel bags to be given to students that are placed in foster care. The bags will contain a blanket, books, and supplies needed for school, so we appreciate the sorority. Murfreesboro City Schools would also like to thank the following community members for their financial support of our outreach initiatives. Advanced Financial for sponsoring Boys to Men and Gems Camp. Healthways Incorporated for helping purchase Rover tickets as well as donating pre-K supplies. Stone Trevor Mall was also a sponsor of Boys to Men and Gems Camp. Highway 231 Church of Christ is a sponsor of Family Game Night and did a large celebration for our back-to-school program with lots of school supplies donated. First Tennessee Bank actually donated a lot of our preschool supplies, as well as the Murfreesboro Muslim Youth, again, preschool supplies that we were needing. MTSU Collegiate 100 were a sponsor, only a sponsor, our Boys to Men and Gems Camp, but they were participants, so they helped us make sure that those camps went off wonderfully. Also, Adventures in Murfreesboro, I think that all of you are very familiar with that program, won an honorable mention from the 2017 National Organization of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. This organization recognizes governmental programming, so we appreciate Murfreesboro City Schools' continued support of educational television featuring our kids in Murfreesboro City Schools in our classrooms. We would also like to congratulate Sarah Easterly. She is the academic coach at Northfield. She's been selected to serve on a state committee to review the content of licensure assessments. Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank the congregation of Hillview Baptist Church for their generous donation of school supplies, and also to Third Baptist Church for providing a back-to-school lunch for the faculty and staff. Both of these are great partners, and Third Baptist Church has actually provided lunch and have wrapped our students in their thoughts for the last 10 years. Mitchell Nielsen would also like to thank the agents of Parks Realty for their generous donations of school supplies to our teachers. These agents spend their own money to buy supplies for the teachers, and we appreciate them, and the teachers certainly appreciate them. Also, St. Mark's mentors made approximately 500 visits to Reeves Rogers to make the day of their mentees during the 2016-17 school year. We want to extend a big thank you to our mentors. Last year was the first year really kicking off this program, and the fact that they were in our school 500 times is amazing. There is a complete list of the mentors in your board packet and online, but we do appreciate St. Mark's and not only the mentor program, but everything that they have done for Reeves Rogers. United Way's 2000 Catalyst Program recognized the family and community outreach coordinator, Ms. Jolene Ratnati, for her attendance and completion of their six-month program. Catalyst is designed to connect and develop business leaders in the community to become engaged in social responsibility through the means of advocacy, giving, and volunteerism. I believe this was the first year, and we were proud that Ms. Ratnati was able to be a part of that. Kristi Mall and Angela Boonji, teachers at Discovery School, have been chosen to represent Murfreesboro City Schools as expert teachers at a conference in Shanghai from August 25 to August 29. They will be working with our Chinese partners by teaching reading in the classroom, STEM, and robotics. We are obviously extremely proud of these teachers representing Murfreesboro City Schools across the world. Also, at this time, I want to turn it over to Dr. Gilbert and let her talk a little bit about the eclipse.
You've already alluded to this a little bit, and the students earlier talked about yesterday, but I really want to give a tremendous shout-out to several folks. First, our staff. I think they were well-trained. I think they absolutely were able to take care of our children, and they showed that they could do that. So, I really want to thank the staff of Murfreesboro City Schools for stepping up the plate. There's been a lot of learning that's been going on over the past week. You've seen some exhibits of that, and you'll see that tonight in the video we have for you. But everything from art to literature to writing to learning about the scientific processes that were going on with the eclipse. I also want to thank MTSU. They have been a tremendous partner with us, even starting back last spring. They were training our teachers and continue to train them during the summer, provided glasses for all of our students and our staff. Those glasses, we will be returning back to them for them to use for, to be recycled in third-world countries, so that's really important. Want to thank Lisa for her help. She was the lead on the contact with MTSU, so I really appreciate all the work that she did there. As you know, we had students who were able to stay in the classroom if their parents did not want them to go outside. We had students who were able to attend authorized events, and we were able to excuse those students. And also, we had students that enjoyed the eclipse. So, I want to thank Pascal Wilt, who stepped up the plate last night really late and said, "Sure, we can put together a video for you to see." So, at this time, Lisa, if you'll click on the video, we'll see the day. I think the faces really say it all. It's really pretty amazing. Really appreciate the families that came out and shared with us too that day. It was really a family event at a lot of our schools. So, again, I want to thank the staff and the families for their support, and thank you, Board, for your support of the day.
Ms. Barrett?
So, I wanted to add that I thought the dare officers really played a very important role in transitioning it. And then I also appreciate the teachers reaching out and trying to get answers when they had concerns, and the district office coming back and, you know, communicating thoroughly with the teachers. And it just ended up, because of all of the thought that went through it, you know, with the students, the teachers, the parents, and everybody, it was just a beautiful experience. My family went, and we had, we really, it was a great time. So, I appreciate the schools being open. That was great. But I also think it was great to give every family had a different option in how to experience the eclipse with their own children.
Right.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else get to visit the school yesterday? Some, okay. I noticed, watched a lot of them out at Black Fox outside, and they all seemed to be having a good time.
There were so many activities.
There were.
I mean, it wasn't just outside. It was, you know, going inside, and the teachers really made it educational, but super fun at the same time, because, you know, you said, I mean, not everybody was at school, so they really wanted to play it up and make it like the best day that they possibly could.
Right.
All right. Okay, consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items, or do we have any question on any of the consent items?
Can you tell us on the approval of school fees part about the Bradley Academy line?
Sure. This is, the school has been going to Atlanta for several years now for the Aythiatics Program, so that is what that is. It's a major event for them. They do fundraising throughout the year and get corporate sponsors in addition to parents, but primarily through corporate sponsorship that that is raised. But this is the event where they go to Bradley and where they go to Atlanta and really get a chance to experience New York quality folks to learn from, and also to see other schools from all over the country. So, you'll remember that several years now, the school has received awards, so this is something that they feel very strongly that it's worth doing, that it's important for their students as an arts school to experience this, so that is what that is.
So, they're having personal fundraisers, and then we're hoping to get grants.
Right. And typically, it's going to be through, last year, they received a grant. They also do, most of the time, it's through school fundraisers rather than just being put on the individual parents, because that's quite a bit on them.
Yes. Thank you.
Also, one of the consent items, we see the approval of second reading on board policies. I have some questions, and I can't get my computer to do like I want it to do. I know it's not my fault. Easy, be nice to me. But I did write down, so if you don't mind, I could like to ask the questions that I've got.
We're going back to the minutes.
Well, board policies.
Which one?
And which one? Any particular one?
There were some things that the board wanted changed. For example, there were some places where it said professional, and I'm just recalling just the, but we went through the minutes and tried to correct everything that you all had requested. I know that one of the things had to do with professional employees changing to employees. That was a big one, I know, on several. There was another one to spell out, TCRS, and I'm just recalling off the top of my head right now.
It's all those number fives, correct?
106, application of employment. All right, if I can, line 28. Where it talks about... I'm hampered, y'all, because I keep getting...
One of the things that you had asked, the one main thing with that one that you had asked is that we have without the appropriate qualifications was one of the additions that you wanted, I think.
Yeah, where it talks about support employees, says without the appropriate qualifications, which that was changed, but where in our policies do people that are applying for these positions find those qualifications? I think, I really think that it should be spelled out maybe in this policy.
Where you would find that, Mr. Ringstaff, would be in the actual, when they would actually click on to apply. It would have the job descriptions there, right?
Yes, in state law, we can do an AD to be more specific and incorporate the state law.
Because otherwise, you're going to have it for lots and lots of...
I'm sorry, Ralph. Excuse me. I wanted to pay attention.
Some of this is state law for the qualification for support employees, but we could do administrative directive to include all that.
But the actual qualifications would be in the job descriptions for each one, because we have lots and lots of certified and non-certified jobs.
Certified and classified, yes, ma'am.
Right, and classified, right. So, when you look on, when you, Mr. Campbell, when you look on the job descriptions, when you click on to apply, you'll find a job description, and it'll have in that job description what the qualifications are for each one of the positions.
All right. You know, I just thought that it ought to be mentioned in this policy, because it talks in this policy about employment, application and employment. Whether or not we need to say, "Without the appropriate qualifications which can be found in job descriptions," something of that nature? What do you think? Board members, what do you think? Do you think it's sufficient as is, without the appropriate qualifications?
Probably, because it...
We can do that.
In a witcher gin.
Goes back to every position, and everyone would have it's own.
Okay.
Do we need to say, "Without the appropriate qualifications mentioned in state law, blah, blah, blah?"
That could, yeah.
Well, what we could do is put it mentioned in the job description. We could do that. We can do that.
Without the appropriate qualifications...
Which can be found in...
...in job descriptions or something to that effect.
We also said, may I? I'm sorry.
You can. Let me go back. I had another note on this. Okay, line 60. We're talking about calendar days. The memorandum of understanding mentioned in there, it calls them calendar days. I'm sorry, I think that says workdays. Do we need to have the same thing here as workdays instead of calendar days? Well, I'm hampered because I keep getting it to work. Slow.
If that's in the memorandum of understanding, it needs to go to workdays. That's our agreement. We need to...
Is this for grievance, or...
This is under initial...
I know, but on the memorandum of understanding, it's 14 days.
In the memorandum of understanding, I think it declares it as workdays, and in this policy, it declares it as calendar days.
The memorandum of understanding talks about the grievance. This talks about the initial employment under board policy. There's two different things.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Anybody else have, mine's just not going to work right, I don't think.
I have one question.
Ms. Rainier?
I think when we discussed this the last visit, line 17, "No person shall be employed who does not hold a valid license to teach from the State Board of Education." I think we suggested putting Tennessee State Board of Education. Because I don't really see Tennessee State Board of Education or Tennessee Board or anything relating to the state until you get down to line 21, and that's the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
Okay.
I just think it clarifies a little bit more as to our system.
Okay.
Well, I can't see much more. I'm going to have to pull up the policies. Well, this, I'm still trying, but it sure is slow. I went faster than this today outside in the heat.
Mr. Campbell, is it on that policy? Do you remember?
Well, I've got some other notes, Dr. Gilbert, but I can't...
Because I have a hard copy.
I can't, I can't get them to pull up.
Okay.
I mean, I can't get the e-meeting policies to pull up where I had made all the notes. Well, wait, hold on here. Maybe, maybe, maybe. We've got another reading to go, don't we?
No.
This would be your second on these.
This is the consent item.
Yeah, yeah. But these, I mean, these are the...
This would be your final reading on these.
Does anybody else have a question on any?
See if you can do that.
Well, see, I can't see if... Well, what I'm saying is, I don't have, see, I can't get to my notes that I made in the policies, because it won't go fast enough to pull the policies up.
The notes are there.
No, I don't mind at all. Yeah.
Running real slow.
Policy 115, 5115. See, it's frozen up tighter than Dick's hat band. Dick's hat band. You never heard that before?
No, I have not.
Assignment transfer.
I'm sorry, what policy are we reviewing?
Well, I had 115, but see, I can't...
Assignment transfer.
I put the titles there.
I'm sorry, Ralph. I don't know. I can't...
You're fine.
This computer won't do like it's supposed to do, and you know it's not the operator.
I'm having the same problem, Mr. Chairman.
Assignment transfer rescinds, yeah, it's not moving.
I can get to the e-meeting site, but when I try to open up one of the files, it...
It won't open.
It closes down. It says it can't open.
Okay.
Do you want to leave it till the next meeting?
We can approve this if you had changes and...
We can wait. Questions.
Wait till next time.
Yeah, we could. I move that we table this till the next meeting, until we've all had a chance to be on the same page, if you will.
Okay.
For the policies. For these policies, thank you.
Have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Okay. All right, move on.
Now, your next one also are two new policies, so take a look and see if you can pull those. These, well, no, they're not. I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself.
Well, this is for first...
No, this is, I know, memorandum of understanding is first, Ralph.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we're ready for action items. If you'll go ahead with that.
Memorandum.
Yes.
Ralph is great. We're buddies, thank you.
There's a picture right there.
We're buddies.
Last November, the teachers voted to join in collaborative talks with the management of city schools, and Mr. Dickerson and I, we've gotten together several times and talked over our previous memorandum of understanding and made a few changes, and his committee signed off on it, the management committee signed off on it. And the next step is for your approval, and I would like for Mr. Dickerson to say a few words about this process.
This has been a really great process for our school district. Like, we are becoming like a model for other school systems and for other, like, local teacher associations. We were very fortunate to begin with a strong memorandum in the first place. I think that has a lot to do with kind of like our district culture and the relationship that our association has had with the board and also with management. So, I really feel very fortunate to be able to work like with Ralph. So, like, when there's a problem that comes up with a teacher, I can email him, and either Ralph or Linda responds back really quickly. Ralph and I have already been contacted by other school districts asking how we've gone through this process, and I know a lot of local association presidents have contacted me about the language we use. So, we started off with a strong agreement. We made a few changes. One of the things we wanted to do was change the wording about the requirements for the workday for teachers. We wanted a specific number of hours instead of just saying 15 minutes before school and 15 minutes after. We're a bit more explicit, and that also kind of mirrors school board policy. This is something that we have to update every three years, so that's one of the reasons we do that, is so that our agreement can mirror board policy a little bit better. We also wanted a clause in our agreement about federal guidelines for environmental factors like air quality and water quality. We wanted to make sure that everybody in our buildings drinking clean water, which we're very fortunate that we have new buildings that Gary keeps a close eye on that. So, I know a lot of my local association president members across the state are really jealous about that. So, we're very fortunate.
Tell them to come on over.
Just look in the news.
Steal them where I can get them. I really appreciate the relationship that we have with Luke and with MEA. It's nice to feel like that you can call each other at 9:30 at night or whatever time and hear what we need to hear. So, and I appreciate Ralph working with Luke.
Ms. West, batter?
Yep, for both of you. Yep, for both of you, Luke and Ralph. Can you give an example of where you had came to an impasse and how you resolved it? Or was there anything that you were very contentious about?
I don't think so.
Good, good, so it was pretty much a...
We already had a really strong agreement in place. So, when we talked about certain issues, it was interesting to talk with management, see their perspective on certain things because it provided extra input for us and our committee members. Maybe we didn't want that language in place, so, you know. I think that's one of the good things about this kind of collaborative process. So, and I think too, like in our district, our association is seen more as a resource to help attract and maintain, like, really the best employees that we can have as a district. So, I really appreciate that.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
You mentioned changes, were those the only two you had in agreement this go around?
Another small change about sidewalks and parking lots, implement weather.
Okay.
Making sure that those are cleared.
Of course.
Particularly members that we're at, like, overall in Hobgood, where we have the pavers in place, it's very difficult to keep ice off the pavers. So, that may be something the board may want to look at when we're building new schools.
Okay.
So, I'm glad y'all are quite the team, I appreciate it. I'm concerned that we didn't hold our end of the bargain. What if we don't? So, like, one of the lines is, "The board shall provide a clean, orderly, and functioning classroom one week prior to the first day of in-service." Clean desk, chalkboards, restrooms, overhead lights.
Typically, there's some locals that have actually taken their school boards to court over this. That's not something that we, as association, prefer to do. I would much rather go to Linda and address those issues and get them worked out and responded. So, that's typically our...our routine for that. And usually Linda and/or Gary or Ralph have been really on top of those things.
I...I am impressed with your relationship with the school system.
There's some flexibility, but also, one of the problems, like, with the agreement is you have to have evidence for some of these things before you take them to court. But honestly, those are things that, as a school system, we should want to provide for our students, I think.
If there's a...if there's a problem with the timeline, then he just calls me and says, and I'll say, here's the reason why. So, it's a real open relationship. I mean, it's...the other thing, Luke, that I was thinking about is the use of the building for meetings, which we have no problem with.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was the other thing that he asked this year. There's not a...and correct me if I'm wrong, cause you will, cause we just have that relationship. And I just don't feel the contentious relationship there. I mean, it's...and I don't want a contentious relationship, it shouldn't be.
No, we shouldn't. And, you know, there's gonna be extenuating circumstances, I think. I think there's the spirit of the agreement, and that's really what we want to keep.
Any other questions? We need to have an approval of...am I correct? Board needs to approve this memorandum of understanding, have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Renier, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you very much. Thank you, Luke.
You so much, we appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you do for all the staff folks and also for us as well.
Your next item is, is if we can open them up, and that'll be, I guess, the question, is we have two new policies. One is our sick leave, and then the other one has to do with employment opportunities. Your sick leave policy, what we did with that, really, we're combining PER twenty-five and twenty-six. Twenty-five had to do with licensed employees and twenty-six had to do with classified. So, the verbiage of the new policy is exactly what the verbiage of the old policy was. Except, instead of classified employee or include, instead of certified employee, it just simply says employee.
Well, in line twenty-one through twenty-three, we had to put professional employee because it talks about substitute teachers.
Right.
I have copies of these, do you?
Ms. Saddle?
I just remembered this note, I don't have mine pulled up, my computer's restarting several times. The question that I had has to do with use of sick leave. It mentions illness, and I think it spells out parents, in-laws, all the way down to great aunt Sally.
Yes, sir.
Very generous.
There you go.
The question I have is, it doesn't mention that you could use a sick leave day for a doctor's office visit.
If you...
Do you have to use annual leave for that?
If it's...if you go to a doctor's visit, it's perceived to be a sick day.
But it doesn't spell it out, it only says that if you're sick, I thought. And I could be, cause I'm pouring from memory.
Here it is.
Thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Leave of absence because of illness of the employee from natural causes or accident. I guess I would feel more comfortable if it said that, because it's sick...it says, "Sick leave shall mean leave of absence because of illness of the employee from natural causes or accident of the illness or death of employee's spouse, et cetera, et cetera."
Should we add annual physical visits?
Wellness visits?
Wellness visits, I would feel comfortable.
Okay, we can do that.
Ms. Barrett?
Line twenty-one on the policy says, "Professional employee shall notify the principal, their principals designate a reasonable..." When I was first reading that, I thought maybe we need to add the word, and I'm trying to remember what word it was. Within a reasonable length of time? Line twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
The way it was written, it was like, it didn't...wasn't reading right.
Oh.
Let me see. Yeah.
It reads funny. It does say what it's supposed to say, but it...when I read it, I thought...
When you read it out loud.
When you read it out loud, it kind of... Instead of saying, "Shall notify the principal, principals designate..."
Would we put the word within?
I think it works with the word within, so...
Okay.
It works for me, but, you know.
Thank you.
Line twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Where we're talking about notifying the principal, is an hour enough time? What happens if we already have contracted for a substitute for that teacher and then an hour beforehand, the teacher's able to come back to school, which is great? But then what happens to the substitute? Are we still obligated to that sub for the day?
If we notified them within an hour before the school day starts, we would not be. We would probably get them another job somewhere else, probably in that same school.
Okay, but if we...if we could not, we're not obligated to pay them for that day?
No, sir.
Is that a change?
No, sir, this...this policy's been in existence, I think, since nineteen...I mean, two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
Since when?
Two thousand and eleven.
Okay, Ms. Renier?
My question was on lines fourteen to eighteen. This is talking about the termination of an employee, talking about sick days, I believe, I'm not reading it right now. But employee who has sick days left after termination, and that they can, isn't it, they can be used, taken elsewhere if they're in the state, blah, 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 blah. My question, and that they would have to have their pay docked if they were short.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, my question is, in the past, this has happened every year because when I lost my first husband, my children were ill. We had chickenpox, one of them one week, the other one two weeks later, and we were out for...I was out for a week for both. I ended up several times being a single mom, not having enough sick days for the year, not being able to build up days. And my pay would be docked at the end of the year, but I don't see that reflected anywhere in this policy. It talks about the termination aspect, but not for a teacher who is, you know...
Continuously employed.
Continuously employed, and what happens if this year, twenty-seven, eighteen, Suzie Jones uses many of her sick days and goes beyond her ten days and she has no more days left? Then at the end of the year, her last final paycheck is deducted this amount, is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am, you are correct.
I don't see it reflected in the policy unless you...
You're right, line fourteen talks about termination of the employment, so we can cover the situation that you're talking about. We'll add that before the second reading.
I mean, I'm sure teachers would rather we didn't, but I know that that's...
Well, we need to let them know.
An ongoing policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on the policy? Alright, do I have a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Saddle.
Don't we have to approve with changes?
I'm sorry, I just assumed with the...with the changes, yes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Your next policy is five point one oh four. With this particular policy, what you have is PER forty-three, starts with line five. And then right above that, you have...you're...it's a combination of your ADA and also your equal opportunity employment.
Here it comes.
Yes, right ahead, right ahead.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Saddle?
The only thing I noticed on this was there's a typo on line seven. Americans with disability ace instead of disabilities act.
You are correct.
I was typing really fast that day.
Tell them those fingers get to moving.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this policy?
You are an ace.
Do I have a motion to approve with Mr. Saddle's change?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Thank you.
For your reports from information, I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. The first report is your revenue expenditure report, I don't know if you can pull it up, it's...obviously, everything's slow this evening on it. We're at eight point three percent, we're into one...one month of this...of the year, of the fiscal year. We are negative nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Last year at this time, we were negative eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. It's slightly more negative because different things come at different times. We paid some things earlier this year than we did last year, and some things are behind. So, that's just...this early in the year, it's just timing on when we...when we pay them and when we get money in. Revenue-wise, we are at the point six percent because we do not receive any property or sales tax yet on our accounts because we don't get paid...they're always twenty days behind, a month and twenty days behind. So, we...nothing shows up on this report. Last year at this time, we were at point seven percent, so we're right in the same...same ballpark. On the expenditure side, we're at one point nine percent. Last year at this time, we were at one point eight percent. And again, it's where we had...we had paid for things upfront to start the year. So, the first month or two is always paying off things like software programs and stuff that we have to pay for, for the entire year. Overall, we're...we're comfortable where we are right now in our operations, so it's...it's pretty normal.
Okay, any questions on the financial report?
We get a great windfall from all these people, they kind of murfrees for a big clip.
Yeah, all the sales teams.
It's gonna be fabulous.
Absolutely wonderful. On the enrollment report, we're at eight thousand, eight hundred and four students as of last Friday. That put us up two hundred and seven students. We are at nineteen point one seven pupil teacher ratio for K through three and twenty-one point one three for four through six, which put us at nineteen point nine two blended average of all K through six grades. What we do is, the first two weeks of school, we basically ask the schools to let us know the enrollment numbers every day, and then we say, if you have any major changes, tell us between now and Labor Day. And then we come back after Labor Day and get the first day after Labor Day, get the numbers again for people that move in. We are already up over what we were last Friday, up about twenty-five, thirty students, so that's...that's a good sign.
Just today?
Since Friday, Monday, Monday and Tuesday. So, that's a good sign, and we were...we had actually leveled off for three days before that, before the weekend, and then all of a sudden, we got more kids who moved into the area.
But did you tell them what...what grade level they were allowed to move into?
The state of Tennessee funds us that way, they think we can do that, but we really can't.
You may have thought you were a sixth grader, but you're a second grader. In your garden, stand the hall.
See, the last time we got together, we saw this, we were up two hundred and sixty students. What happened to those other fifty-three? Just...they hadn't shown up yet, and we were counting them?
Well, we're up two hundred and forty-four as of today, but what happens is, when students say they're coming back, we keep them on the roll until they request the documents or the student's file. We have to keep them on the rolls until they actually get the request. So, what happens is, you get a little balloon at the very beginning of the year for the first week or so, then they fall off the rolls, other kids move in, so it kind of levels itself off. That's why a daily count, what we look for is, are there any grade levels that we need to add teachers because something happened or any grade levels we can move? Because it does...it does float, every day is a different number.
Ms. Ma'am?
So, if we had to add any new teachers in the last two weeks?
We've had one or two growth additions with power our last one last Friday.
So, we...we don't have any teacher openings right now.
And what we...
That's very impressive.
What we had done, Ralph, I'm thinking, is what we try to do is not split a class after school starts. And so, where we thought that we were gonna have, well, where we knew we were gonna have openings, we asked the principals to go ahead and divide the classes up and had a coach or an academic interventionist or someone in those classes until we could get clearance for the teacher that was gonna take that place, right?
From the first full day of school was when we made the changes that day. To go to the second day, we have not made any changes since the second day. We have not hired any additional staff. We have four hundred and nine regular K-six teachers since that day. Now, they've moved some from grade level to grade level to fit the numbers, but we haven't hired any additional people since that day.
What...what do we try to keep our...I'm sorry, Ms. Ballard, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, what...this is...this is our school count, what about our central office? Have we done hiring and are we...did we have manning requirements? I know when we went through the budget, we had some things that were going to increase manpower at central office. Have we taken care of that, or are we...
Actually, what we were looking at there, we were looking at English language learners, counselor, Ralph, I don't recall. Counselor, we added, we added a behavior specialist. We added, I'm trying to think of what we did add, I need to...
We had a new hire gifted specialist.
We gifted, right, right, we had a gifted specialist. Let me pull up.
We had a gifted specialist last year, we just...
No, you filled the...
That's right, we filled it, yeah, it wasn't a new position there, but we did have... Hold on, I'll tell ya. But we have those...we have those filled.
I think we added a security tech person.
We added...we worked on a three percent raise, family insurance, we added a counselor, we added an ESL teacher, a behavior specialist, we added a tech security person. We had at least one comprehensive development class person, maybe two. I know initially, we thought one, and I'm thinking we had to add one. At least two of our special ed pre-K classes, and we may have added one more, I can't remember. Added a nurse, bus driver and bus aide, a special ed pre-K coach, and then the gifted EA. That's what we added to the budget this year.
So, all of those are full, okay?
Good.
What...what pupil teacher ratio do we try to obtain in sixth grade?
It can go...it can go up to thirty. What we look at more than anything is what's gonna happen if we add a teacher, if we take a teacher. For example, you could have a school that...that has, and let me just take...let me just take one. When...when you look at a school that has like forty-six with three, that pupil teacher ratio is fifteen point three three, but if we take a teacher away from that and we have forty-six students and... and two teachers, then you're looking at twenty-three students. So, it really is going to vary. When you have a class... When you have a grade level, regardless of grade level, that has just a few teachers, the impact of moving a teacher has a much more... Has a greater influence than a grade level, for example, that would have eight or nine teachers in it. So, it really depends on the grade level, and it really depends on the need of what we hear from the principals. And in some cases, and we... Well, we have one this year, but where a principal could have chosen to move a teacher into a sixth grade class or into another grade class. And what usually happens when I see those numbers is I'll call that principal. And frequently, what I'll hear is, "I'd much rather keep those numbers at that particular grade level because this particular grade level..." I'm happy with the teachers there. I don't want to have to add in a teacher that's an inexperienced teacher, particularly at this time of year. After... In fact, Ralph said he's going to hire about ninety teachers next January because when you get into July, June and July, you wind up... A lot of times, if you pull a new teacher into or a teacher who's... A teacher who is not used to collaboration, a teacher who is not used to high expectations, a teacher who doesn't have real focus on the whole child, you pull somebody in that doesn't have that into a grade level, and it really can mess that grade level up because those teachers spend a lot of their time having to bring this other teacher up to par. Or what happens if they don't then is their scores are hurt. So, a lot of times, you'll have teachers that'll just say, "I don't want to add another teacher in. I got it that we've got twenty-three, twenty-four students." But it's going to take more of our time not to.
So, back to that same question. Did the majority of these sixth grade classes that are in the twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six, do they rotate classes or just stay with one teacher?
It depends, and that's left up to the school. I know at least one school where they've said, "We're going to go with self-contained," and I'm fine with that. So, it really...
Oh, I know that. I know that one as well. What are the other ones?
Yeah, we really leave that up to the principal.
Okay.
For fifth and sixth?
We added, so far, a hundred and ten extra sixth grade students over last year's numbers, and we added four sixth grade teachers this year. So, that was good to retain that. So, we're at seven hundred and eleven sixth grade students this year. So, obviously, we want our sixth grade numbers to be as strong as they can be.
People are getting smart. About sixth grade, it's very good to be in elementary school.
We have some terrific teachers this year in sixth grade. And in fact, I'm really proud, and you all have heard me say this, but I want to say it publicly. I am really proud of teachers who have decided to come join us this year. It's a great group, and I really appreciate the work that Ralph and Sherry do and the relationship they have with the principals. It's just... It's really something to see. It's... I think if you talk to any principal, they'll tell you how much they appreciate the upfront work that they do. It makes a difference. When you don't have to look through many applications, twelve hundred applications, and you say, "Okay, here's the list." Now, you're welcome to look through the twelve hundred applications, but here's what we're seeing. It's huge. And the other thing that I see is I see principals are very cognizant of what other principals need, and so it's not unusual at all for them to say, "Hey, I'm looking for... I need an opening in this grade. Have you interviewed anybody that's good?" We see that all the time. It's really neat to see that relationship and how it works.
All right. Anything else? Mr. Anderson, can you give everybody, all of us, an update on our Black Fox construction site?
Sure can. Talked with the architect today. They are... The construction company has indicated they will be done on Friday with the building. They are having their walkthrough with the architect to do their final punch list on Friday. That establishes the punch list. And then on Monday, the fire inspector will be there, and they fully expect it to clear, the fire inspector. So, we'll be able to start moving everything back into those classrooms.
Great.
Very good. I noticed they put swing set up today that they had moved on the new expanded playground over there, or yesterday, I'm sorry. Mr. Suddles?
I had a question on Hobgood's playground.
Front playground is completed. The back playground, they completed the underlayment today, and they're now waiting on the mulch to come in, and it'll be ready to go as soon as the mulch is delivered.
I have a very concerned little citizen that told his grandmother.
You have a very concerned old woman, too, that hadn't been happy about that.
So, I'm wondering.
That's another story we can discuss.
Not happy.
Yeah. Thanks, David. I know this is not our project, but what about the technology center? Is it coming along pretty well?
I'm assuming so. I would... I haven't talked to...
I've been out there, but...